Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our committee's a whole meeting. Do you want to go ahead and take their role?
Councilor Pointer.
Here.
Councilor Sherman.
Yeah.
Councilor Gray.
Here.
Councilor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilor Dick.
Here.
All right, we're right to the agenda here. We have a review of our parks and rec master plan, and I believe we have a gentleman here, Jim Holtz, who's going to be presenting for us all.
Where do you want me?
You can sit right wherever you like to.
Okay. All right, so I'm Jim Holtz with MSA Professional Services. We're an engineering and planning consultants. I'm out of Dubuque. We also have a Cedar Rapids office, Bettendorf and Ankeny here in Iowa. Shannon, who did the bulk of the work on this, is on maternity leave, so she's not able to be here. But we wanted to just kind of give you an overview of the plan that's completed to date, and then if you've got any questions, concerns, we can talk about those. You'll know, I know I see a lot, all of you have been kind of leafing through it. At the end, in the action plan, there's priorities and like some timeframes that we would be looking at that are not filled in. That's something that you'll do later when you're updating your CIP and your goal setting session, so. So you can go to the next slide, Jim.
Okay, let's search your screens first.
It doesn't worry you, Jim. Okay, you can move on. Again. So the setup for this project was basically to kind of take inventory of what you have, the conditions of what you have, and then your staff, you know, Doug and his team and Tim, already had kind of a wish list of some things that they've heard from the public in the past that you'd like to include and maybe where that could go. So we kind of added that in here as well. So that's, it gets us through, and then this was all presented to the Parks and Rec Commission. They've had a chance to take a look at it and give their input, and we've entered everything in that they've commented on. So basically, at this point, it's their recommendation that the council adopt this. Move on to the next.
These are backwards, I think. I think.
This isn't the same thing as what you're looking at.
Oh, it isn't?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
This is the actual plan. This is.
I'm not going to go page by page. I'm just going to hit the highlights, but if you've got things that you're finding in the plan as you kind of scan through there and you want to talk about it.
It's where it says introduction or acknowledgement of the steps of the beginning.
That's the end.
That's the end.
Yeah, so that's the plan. The presentation is different from the plan, so you don't have a copy of the presentation.
All right. That's perfect, because I thought I was moving it. Oh, no, thank you.
All right, so the plan contains following chapters, an introduction, a description, so basically your current conditions, the goals and objectives, and then an analysis of each of the parks, what their needs are and what recommendations we may have for those parks, and then kind of that implementation plan that I kind of alluded to earlier. So goal strategies and policies, we've got some overarching ones. Goal one, have safe access to quality park and rec facilities, equipment, programming, regardless of incoming aid, resiliency, or geographic location. Goal two, ensure that your parks and rec system stays current to the latest trends and is responsive to residents' needs. Goal three, maintain an inclusive, high-quality, and efficient parks and rec system in Manchester by designing parks and open spaces to be inclusive and aesthetically pleasing. Goal four, coordinate park development efforts with other city departments, government, school district, et cetera, and other athletic or recreational organizations operating within the community. Goal five, promote the trails and rec facilities that you do have. Goal six, provide adequate management staffing levels to oversee the maintenance of all of your facilities. Some of these have been a continuation of your previous park and rec system plan, so this is an update, but so a lot of this may sound very familiar to you already. We can move on to system recommendations. So enhance park accessibility, ensure that all community members have easy access to local parks and rec areas. Policies, increase the number of parks and green spaces in underserved neighborhoods. Implement accessible infrastructure such as sidewalks and bike lanes connecting parks to residential areas. Develop trails planned that facilitates access to parks, reducing reliance on private vehicles. In that, looking at the underserved neighborhoods, there's a map within the plan itself where we look at a quarter mile, a half mile walking distance of every park that you have. That's basically a five to 10 minute walk for individuals to get to a park. And National Parks and Rec Association recommends that everybody have access to a park within at least a 10 minute walk. You're pretty well covered throughout the community. You can see that there might be some gaps in that five minute walk versus the 10 minute walk. So when you're investing in new parks, this map can kind of help you kind of look at where you might want to consider a new park space. And of course, when it comes to new park space, it means that you have to actually acquire land or have it already too. But this is just kind of a guide, said, hey, these are some of the areas that you might want to, might want to consider. Other recommendations for the system, foster park innovation, encourage a culture of creativity and innovation within the parks. And policies under that would be establish innovative parks and gathering spaces that residents and visitors can take pride in, organize workshops, programs in advance for both learning and the DX community. Partner with local businesses and educational institutions to provide resources for parking. This is all stuff that you're already doing a really good job of. I know that you've worked with the University of Iowa on some things. You're now working with the Rural Development Initiative. I can't remember what the name of it is. Yeah, so you're doing this, but these are still, they're the goals and the system recommendations, so you don't want to lose sight of that, and that's why you're doing the things that you're doing. Another one is promote health and wellness, improve the physical and mental well-being of community members. The policies within there is organize fitness and wellness programs in local parks such as yoga classes, walking groups, and outdoor exercise station. Educate residents about healthy living through workshops, seminars, and parks and recreation programs. Collaborate with community members to encourage play, fitness, education, and personal connections for all ages, interests, and affiliates. It's pretty self-explanatory. Then preserve and enhance natural spaces. Policies within that would be launch community cleanup initiatives to remove litter and invasive species from local parks and natural areas. Implement conservation projects, protect wildlife habitats, plant native species, and green spaces. Develop nature trails and educational science to increase awareness and appreciation of local systems.
And some of that ties into our efforts for stormwater management while we work in the urban wetlands area. And so there are more to this than just recreational aspects of it. These are things, while we're looking at different projects, we want to make it a multi-use project instead of having a single use or single purpose for those things. So this really ties into what we've been doing for the last two years.
And when you have that multi-use function of these facilities, it also increases your opportunities for funding at those facilities as well. Stormwater is a big one. If you can be looking at water quality improvements, there's a lot of funding available out there for those types of projects. Another recommendation, enhance community pride, still sense of pride. Oh, that's, isn't that what we just? I feel like I just said that.
No, no.
Organize regular community events, celebrations, and festivals that showcase local culture and talent. Support public art projects, murals, and beautification efforts to enhance the visual appeal of the community. Recognize outstanding individuals and community groups with awards for their contributions to the community's well-being and vibrancy. This would be a great opportunity to be, you know, working hand in hand with your Chamber of Commerce and other local organizations to, you know, create awards that maybe you don't already have, to, you know, have contests throughout the community for beautification, cleanups, that sort of thing. Man, I know that you've done a lot of that already.
Yeah, it was all the public art we talked about, whether it was the donation of the kaleidoscope down there at Shelley Park where they changed decorations. You looked at that, the murals, we've done some of those mirrors. We have some sculptures down there on Riverfront Park. And then we also have the arch in 500 North Franklin Road down there. That was from the students down there at the University of Iowa. So again, trying to bring in some more cultural aspects to the city helps promote recreations and the beauty pride.
And we've worked with the Manchester Vitality Group. They've got the new mural down there by Bush and the Pack. And they're working on some other things that way too, the flower baskets, all that kind of stuff. And the chamber for events that we had for our summer.
All right, we'll move into some park-specific recommendations. So we've got Palm Park. There's a list of all the amenities, and there's a page for each one of these within the plan. At the bottom are the recommendations. So Palm Park, that's where your, we've got, consider a future splash pad there. Connect trail to the new wetlands, trail to the east, add new restrooms with an attached pavilion. Those are, those are three of the items that we'd like to consider for future.
Yeah, if you remember in Palm Park, we lost the shelter to the tornado. Part of that is doing a new structure, maybe attaching it onto the wellhouse, redoing the bathrooms there because the bathrooms need to get upgraded. When we do that, because we're looking at multi-function, that wellhouse needs to have some new wiring done to it too, so maybe we make this a little bit bigger project than what we initially anticipated to serve multiple functions. So those are things we're looking at. The splash pad is something we've talked about. Question is, do you tie that in with the swimming pool? So you can use the same filtration system and stashing and have that. Doug, you want to talk about that just real quick, the splash pad aspect of what we talked about at the pool?
At the pool? Yeah, it really, it kind of makes sense to me, you know, we know that we've got an aging pool that it's on its downhill side of its lifespan. And so the idea would be, at least in my brain, would be that we could, when we redo the pool, we would have a splash pad attached to it that would have a double gate system, something that would be allowing to be used, utilized when the pool is not open by the outside. And then when the pool is open, it would be part of the pool. So that way, we're not fighting our own self with admission costs, having something brand new, nice and free right next to what we're trying to get people to pay to enter. Another location would be nice as well, like at, for instance, Palm Park, but it's also that park has some challenges with putting something there. But Gerald Park has the room, has the, we need that to the existing plumbing, or not, if you didn't want to, but at least the option's there to have it, kind of all set for the location.
Yeah, we've got a couple of splash pads identified in here, but the priority would probably be with, when you do the pool, to have one there. That might be your first one. But any additional ones, you know, as funding becomes available, if you have a local donor that sees that, hey, I would love to actually see that splash pad there, I'd be willing to pay for X amount of dollars towards that. Or, you know, I'll match everybody up to a certain amount, and you could, maybe that becomes a higher priority at that point. But if nobody knows that you would even consider that there, you're not going to see funding for it. So you want to have things in your plan so that people can see a vision and actually, you know, be excited about it and maybe donate money for the cause.
I think you have a rendering, don't you, Josh Demmer, or the other show, show, right?
Yeah, concept rendering for the shelter and restroom renovation. It's nothing, I mean, it doesn't look a whole lot different than what the attached pavilion picture is. You know, it's a, it would be attached to, or it would be budded up right next to the existing wellhouse, just essentially be an extension of it off, where it would be a usable park shelter with obviously restroom upgrades, that would be a game plan.
Any questions on Palm Park?
Okay, Central Park. The only recommendations we have there is to revamp the basketball and/or tennis courts and to add additional pickleball courts.
Yep. Pickleball's not going away. It's a.
It's for the hot topic last week.
It's not, it's not, it's not leaving. There's, the demand is not leaving, so the demand will still be there. And so, and our basketball court at Central Park needs to be redone. There's sinkholes and it's got, we've had a few that have popped up over the years. More so recently, it's, I mean, it's time. So it'd be a good way to kill two or three birds with one stone right there.
Denton Park, add a gazebo or small pavilion on the corn crib slab that's there. We found that would be a nice theory to, you know, provide some shade, because there's already a picnic table there. Replace the sand below the playground surfaces with something different and more modern, and then restore the love cabin. So those were, those were the recommendations for that park.
Can I ask about one of them? I mean, love cabin, I mean, does the city own it because of the city property?
See, I didn't know, because there's, there is a historical society that you should have.
Yeah. Planning, so I wasn't sure, so I didn't want to start planning anything for something we did on.
Well, interesting you should say that.
Yeah, I know.
The disco course, it's going to get changed or modified. The hospital's notified me that they are looking to expand and do an addition onto the hospital to the north, which will move their parking lot north into that area that we have the disco course at right now. So we'll be looking at relocating the disco course. But we found there is a demand for it, and it'll be used. So there's interest in community course, they have a disco course, they're just forced to figure out placement and, yeah.
We knew it was coming, we just figured it'd be 20 years instead.
Yeah.
Yeah, obviously, we had not heard that.
That one depends in the plan here.
It just, it came up here recently, so.
Yeah, so we should probably make a little adjustment there. But yeah, disc golf actually is getting really popular. We early just updated theirs. They get a lot of people from outside of the city to come there. Indianola actually holds a lot of tournaments at theirs. And there's, people will travel for that, and that's something, you know, if, since you are going to be moving this, if you can find a really good location and have your standards fairly high, you could attract, you know, people and use it as an economic development engine for the community as well.
Yeah, because there are apps, people can download on their phone, stores, you track where courses are. So it is very popular.
Nice on watches tournaments.
Watches tournaments?
Oh, yeah. There's a really good kid in the Des Moines area. Has won like five tournaments.
I never thought there'd be esports either, but. But there's that too. Okay, Dog Park. So add amenities, obstacles, fencing, double gate signage, and host a grand opening. And since we did this, you haven't done anything further since then, have you?
No, we're just, we're, we're still in that. We have enough money to at least open up next spring. So we'll be able to put a fence up and see, we've got ongoing efforts, but yeah, we're, we at least hit the minimum threshold.
Fantastic.
Maybe October would be really good this weekend.
Yes.
Okay, the next one. Howard and Helen Shelley Memorial Park, the lower, lower the west end of the trail to allow stormwater to run into the river rather than get trapped and causing flood issues. So that's, I don't know how many people are aware of that, but that's, that's been an ongoing issue, and so that's something that's.
One of the things we found out with the flood center, we did some studies back there. When we dropped that initial portion down there to help relieve some of the water pressure, because the water actually gathers down there as it runs down River Street and backs up in the storm index, and then it can't leave until it gets over top of the trail. We put in about a 30 foot section that's about the same elevation as the parking lot back there. And what we've learned through the Iowa Flood Center is we really need to open that up to about 150 feet long to let the amount of water out. Because when we moved the dam, we moved the top head of that back to where drop number six is to keep that elevation of the backwaters the same. And so we actually lowered that water level down through there. And so we can actually see a decrease in our flood basin elevation through where we're able to get that drop downward.
I have a question about the Shelley Park. When you're sitting at the amphitheater, you know, where we have a new structure, and you look across where that Mrs. Ryan's house, that stone house, there's a picnic table, is that part of the park too or not?
Yes.
Did we?
It's a small, there's just a small slipper, so basically to the east of the driveway.
Okay, yeah.
So it's not very accessible.
Right.
You would have to go by foot. You can't park over there.
Right.
And it's, it's a rental, it's changed hands over the years.
Yeah.
So we just, JJ and Mark just cleared off all the, I guess the scrub brush has grown up, had a little bit of a better view. It comes up every two, three years, it grows up pretty good. So yeah, there's just a small area. There's a couple picnic tables that were donated years ago on a bench, but nice pool.
Didn't there used to be a big tree there too at one point? It's still there, okay, all right.
Real big cotton.
Okay, yeah. So I didn't know if that kind of.
There's not a whole lot of ground, there's not a whole lot of ground to do anything there, but it's a nice view.
Yeah, I didn't know if we may put a nice picnic table over there like we, there is now.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
And just so you're aware, we are taking the shade sale down.
Right.
Years ago, Kurt Johnson donated some funds for some benches and tables in memory of Bill Skinner.
Oh, that was nice, okay. Thank you.
All right, Shrem Park. We've got construction pedestrian bridge over there. Real quick, if we can go back one slide, real quick. So one thing with the, with that lowering of the trail is that it would also increase the visibility of the Whitewater Park, so you could pull back behind there in that parking lot and see the river. Right now, you can't. You can, there's that small stretch, but if you were to actually pull your park, you'd be able to see it because it would get lower down. It's also a lot more accessible if you're trying to access it by foot because it goes up, it's got that steep incline going up to the trail. So more than just, I mean, the floodwater obviously is a, is a big, big, big part of it, but it also makes the heck of a lot more accessible and a lot more usable as well.
What does it do though to ADA compliant going up? If, I mean, if it's lower and you're still going to go up into the other park. We stretch out, so you can stretch it enough that you can, because that's going to be a big stretch.
It would be, yeah, it would be everything that goes to the west of the existing dip down to basically behind Burger King.
Okay, so it's not going to go that whole length. So the way I understood it was you were going to do the whole length. Yeah. Boy, you're going to have quite a hill.
Just basically elevation of the parking lot where it's at, that low point now on the trails. Take that further, about 125 feet to the west, and then come back up before we get to the swinging benches.
Okay, got it, thanks.
All right, Shrem Park. Construct a pedestrian bridge over the river near the existing boat lane. Connect the trail from that bridge to the new Dog Park. Create an overlook on the west side of the lake. Clean up the entire west bank of the lake, which I think has been done already because I've seen it all the time. Pave the trail with priority on the segment near the beach that's been done. And then the concrete pad for the bleachers.
Not done, but in the works. Fixed, this is fixed to the point of, if it happens, it happens, but at least we're remaining on the erosion, so.
All right.
Yeah, so part of that was completed with partnership with XL Specialized Trailers, where they help pay for cleaning out that and dredging up the lake and relocating the pond or the trail to the western part.
Yep. It's kind of a freeway partnership with the Harbocus Kies XL Trailers in the city. So Harbocus Kies get a deeper, wider on the ski end. We get a much cleaner west end, and XL Trailers was generous in footing the vast majority of the, of the cost for it, and then they have their area that's cleaned up and tidied up and it looks better from the highway from there.
Are they going to build the overlook too?
That's there, yes. That was their, that was their project, yes, but it's gotten tossed around a little bit, so.
Okay, yeah, cool.
It'll just be a good location for the disco course. Not enough room.
What about to the east of the pond?
Um, no, not enough room. There's, there's only a little bit of room there to the east of the pond, and it's below. So if you, if you go back there, there's, you'd maybe be able to get two holes max in that area. And then the open parking lot area, so the thing with disc golf courses is if you're in the woods, your holes are shorter. If you're in the open, your holes are longer. So if we were to utilize the, I guess, the grass parking lot, you'd again get maybe three holes, four holes max. And so there's just not a whole lot of room. If you're, if you're going wide open, you want distance. If you're going in woods or timber, then you don't need as much distance because you've got your obstacles built, so it's more of an accuracy shot, so. Not, not quite big enough there, unfortunately. We can do some holes, just couldn't do, couldn't do a full bridge.
You'll do a most of the bridge.
Yeah, the bridge would be ideal, yep. And you'd have, essentially, you'd have the same thing. You'd have a couple of long, wide open holes, and then you're in the woods holes as well. And we can obviously connect a lot of things, bike trails and parks and portions of the city, et cetera.
Great. Sebert, Sebert Park? Sebert Park in Memorial Hall. Replace the building with similar sized ones, but with a better layout. Separate the garage area to a separate building located near the parking lot. Pave the existing parking lot, remove the basketball court, and create new entrance with parking lot at that end. Replace the playground equipment and move the pavilion to the new parking lot, it's new south entrance. So there's a lot to do in this park, but it could be really well done.
And this park does need quite a bit of investment into it. We've not really been in Sebert Park, assuming we've all been in there. You know, it's not laid out well, there's a post right in the middle of everything. There's a quite a bit of storage area that takes up too much space that we can't use. From outside restroom, it doesn't work the best either. So really, we're doing that to have a nice facility that we can rent out and reuse for city functions as well, would be beneficial. Getting another shelter and another parking lot on the south side of that park also because it is quite a distance from one end to the other. And then the playground equipment is being rather old and finding replacement parts to fix it and keep it up is getting more difficult.
Playground equipment is old square post. That's a miracle playground. They do not carry those replacement parts anymore. That's the same situation we ran into with Gerald Park Playground before that was replaced. So you can find some old, potentially find some old button yard that they have, but if anything goes wrong, it's, they no longer manufacture parts for the square post setups. They're all round posts now, so. It's shown its age, it serves a purpose still, but it's definitely on its last legs. And obviously, the, the building is, serves a purpose. It's a, it's a nice, it's a nice low-cost facility for what it serves, but it's, it also gets musty. It's, it wasn't designed for what it is used for. It serves a purpose, but could be, could be misshapen.
Is there a, is there a sand volleyball court up there?
There is, yep. Directly south of the, of the building.
Part of the secret so forth.
Oh, yeah, it's got, I guess, I didn't even lose her.
It goes in cycles. It was used heavily this year. We've had, it just depends on the age. When the, when the volleyball teams take an interest in it, we make sure it's up and running really well. When they don't, it's about every three or four years, there's a cycle of heavy usage. This year was heavy usage. So we brought in new sand and got her back up to speed. Not that it's ever disrepair, but definitely when we know it's getting used, we pay attention to it a little bit more.
Because I understand, I mean, we used to have volleyball courts everywhere. We used to have skating rinks and then the volleyball courts, and then we came in.
Yeah.
Yeah, and now there's sand volleyball, I understand the girls are doing.
That's, that's exactly it. They, they were like, the volleyball teams, the high school teams were utilizing it as kind of a summer training. And they were hitting some sand volleyball tournaments, ways to keep it fun and, but still stay active in the summer.
Be nice to have a place where they can do soccer too, besides just up at the school, or tag football.
All right, Gerald Park. The big mat and balls, the aquatic center. Replacing that on the existing footprint, potentially add a splash pad to the south. Replace the color between the lake and the river, add a new sign, add more swinging benches similar to at Whitewater Park. Consider dredging the lake in the long term. Um, consider dredging the lake in the long term and construct and are. Consider an urban fisheries grant. The DNR has a program well that where they will work with you on. Like if you were to dredge the lake, they'll work with you on how to do that in a manner that's gonna be, create the best habitat for fish. And they'll stock the, the lake for you. Uh. So they would make sure that it's, it would, it would work for the fish that you wanted in that facility, but. Those are, are larger dollar um projects, but again, if you don't bring it up and put it into a plan, it's never going to happen, so.
I had a question about the pickleball courts. Uh, so people, citizens were asked, we have put lights with those pickleball courts. At Terrell Park so they can play later today. Cause they get off work later and this time of year it starts so early.
We used to have, um, when we did, yeah, when we redid that, that court, the, the electrical. Was needed to be upgraded, so in order to make that project happen, we cut the lights out. Uh, but lights are in the, since we already had existing lights at Central Park, they would be in that plan for pickleball courts. That would go in at Central.
Okay.
So we give them a spot and play at night.
There's also people asking for indoor pickleball so they can play here while, around, so, yeah.
And we have neighbors asking for no pickleball courts.
I know, I live right here. There you go.
The coast could be a problem.
We have to tear it down and build a new one.
Yes, yes. Or you could get a developer to do one associated with the bar, like they've got in Cedar Rapids.
Anything else on Terrell Park?
All right, Whitewater Riverside Park. Uh, just maintain and, and uh promote. That as much as possible. Everything's in really good shape. You've invested a lot of, a lot of dollars there, a lot of volunteer hours, I'm sure as well. So it's fantastic facility and just need to make sure that you keep it up. So you have to be budgeting for maintenance on annual basis. That's all I had for the presentation. So if you had any other questions, uh, I'd be more than happy to try and answer those tonight. If you have, if you go through this later and you have questions, you know, Doug, Tim, myself, um. We're all available to, to answer any of those questions or, you know, add, add additional. Things into this plan that might not already be here.
What we'd like to do is give you time to reflect on everything that was presented tonight. Uh, if you can get those back questions to Doug and Ryan in the next two weeks, we would like to have a council accept. Uh, the plan at the meeting on the twentieth. If you are, are ready to adapt or accept at that point.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. So you're a doctor. Appreciate it. And thank you both for helping us. I appreciate it. All right, next before us, uh, we have the noise ordinance review.
Yes, uh, so. One of the things, you know, again, we, we did a look, what saved me was using the noise ordinance. And so we've adopted a lot of what we have as standards here. One of the questions I do have is, you know, a lot of the distance we're talking about is fifty feet from. Uh, the property line or the vehicle that's making the noise or whatever it is. Is fifty feet what you're comfortable with? Do you want some other distance? You want seventy-five hundred foot? Uh, because that, that makes determination how we, how the police department interprets it and how they enforce it.
You said the fifty feet is what the beauty does now?
Yes.
The issue that came up is that our existing ordinance only pertains to vehicle noise and so as other issues have arisen. I'm correct, Chad? We haven't really had a section to address that.
And the green orange was for steering.
So this is like open headers. This is those micros, walking tires.
But, well, this is also for people that are playing music at two o'clock in the morning.
Two o'clock in the morning, yeah.
Keeping people up.
It's not just vehicles.
Right.
No, we, we want to expand that noise, uh, disturbance on there as well. So, you know, again, in the scope of regulations is what State of Iowa has lived out here. And that last sentence reads. Or council has determined that by reason of public acceptance of the activity producing a particular noise or no. Such noise is acceptable to the residents of the city. Fireworks display. We, we've branded permits, so we know when they're going off, the timeline, they may be. At a time when it's noise going off and acceptable physically for, you know, louder than fifty feet. Mister for that. You know, if we have a event going on downtown and it's going until midnight. Where we have music playing at a venue. You know, we, we have that underwritten rule, you know, contractors, they can't start before seven AM and they have to finish by nine. But it's underwritten. Now it's putting, putting it in place.
So like if River Band had outdoor entertainment, they would still be covering for that. Do they have a permit then to have that out?
Well, that, that's the question that comes into play. Um. You know, how late are they allowed to play that is it, or, or that the sound going down loud? Uh, in this, you know, everything has to be inside unless there is an event that the council has approved. I'm not sure that we want to get into approving every night that a bar wants to have a band for that.
On a modern day, darn most of bars are pretty much dead by midnight.
Not like when we were going in. Midnight, one o'clock, two o'clock.
These uh. There, it's all eleven, eleven o'clock staff time. Might hurt all the noise ordinance. Is that correct?
Uh, outdoor music and amplified noise is midnight.
Okay.
Doing midnight and nine AM. So I think that's kind of where the bar noise kind of gets what we're doing. But you know, we have things, special events like the fair. We recognize that that's a special event and it's acceptable. Someone's wedding or is not necessarily. Number tens, cause yeah, don't use it and play noise. So there is no rush for us to report with this, but we do want to make sure we get it right, so.
Yeah.
Why, yeah, why is the outdoor music not allowed from midnight to nine AM, but you can start. Pull those in and knocking stuff down at seven AM?
We know it should totally change it to seven AM.
Well, I, I mean, that's just the way I kind of look at it. It's noise is noise. So like your outdoor noise.
Lawnmower, snowmower.
Right. I mean, it, the city wakes up at seven AM. Yeah, so get, if you have snowmowers, you're gonna have guys going out and.
Those are snow emergencies. We typically. Complain with that. You don't simply typically see someone mowing lawn at five AM.
Yeah, somebody doing it nine PM or ten PM one night with lights. I don't know how well it looked when they got done it, but.
I try to.
Doesn't work, yeah.
So we can change it up to seven AM, be consistent with everything else. Again, we really would like you to take some time to look at this, give it some thought. You know, Aaron and I look at these things, it blends together. Chad has spent several blocks out working on this as well, so. The engine braking, the pressure brakes, that's from our existing ordinance already, so.
My number of that?
Uh, forty-eight point zero four. On second page, bottom second page, it goes on to third page.
Oh, and that's what we're running J brakes and stuff, Tom?
Yeah, our J brake is a brand employee.
We could have this on like agenda for just discussion on Monday again, give you guys some time for review. We wouldn't have been on for action yet, just.
Just for comments.
Just for comments, any changes you know that we should make and.
Good luck on Gary Perry. I'm gonna help that by my. As equal, they always, they always, we never in Ranger. I feel like some people make sure you that when it says do not use. Like, what are you gonna do? There's certain ones that. The sound is cool. Well, it's also some cool tunes to get pulled over.
Okay. So the next one, we have the on street parking, twenty-four hour restriction review. Got the next one?
Yeah, again, we, we brought this back for you to discuss. I know there's concerns, um, even at the level. As far as contractors that are working on a house, they parked their job truck from, I think that's given an exception. Uh, because they are doing work. Um, but if it's just something that's being stored there or parked there. Set a period of time, I've got more of a concerns. The question, you know, one of the questions I brought up is. Three hundred foot is where it has to be moved every twenty-four hours. Is, is that too far? Should it be just a hundred foot? Uh, or is that the right distance? Uh, twenty-four hours, again. It's an enforcement issue. Police department isn't necessarily going to know that vehicle's been parked there for more than twenty-four hours. Uh, we, we're not legally allowed to chuck tires anywhere. Uh, so a lot of this complaint basis driven. Or for outfalls though.
Your brain is the same time you did earlier.
Yeah, the only thing I ever see too is seems like a lot of trailers, trailer trailers. You know, nobody puts homes behind, that's what worries me a lot, though.
The reflectivity on something like that seem like.
Yeah, cause with DOT, if it's under X feet, it doesn't even have to have reflectors on. I don't remember what the length of, but. Well, the current ordinance one takes care of motor vehicles.
So this won't take care of trailer? This will, okay. I thought I saw both trailers coming to each trailers.
There were like, there's a lot of griping about that. Is there other people leaving their boats? Or utility trailer that those people are around, hold on.
Sorry. They don't want to park in their driveway, walk in the driveway, so.
So what's the plan going forward? Are we just gonna discuss it again on Monday?
Well, you want to discuss it tonight. You have some ideas or thoughts. Let's talk to you tonight and then we'll bring it back Monday too.
For further discussion.
For further discussion, correct.
People must bring it up to vote on it or start the reading, so, okay.
I'd like to see the window, be a little artist. I just kind of think of some people, you come back from camping. And you pull in Sunday night, you're on hook and you're starting to clean it all out. You go to work the next day, you come back and you gotta move it as soon as you get back from work. You might not have that opportunity. Give them an extra day. I don't think so.
It is generate complete basis, so typically you'll get forty-eight hours. Um. I'm not sure the police department can sit there. If it's parked out for a week, yeah, that, that's an issue.
Right.
Right. Someone cleaning things out, but it's.
Cause it, it takes, you know, when you're back from a week long, I mean, you've got. Five days. Six kids, you gotta get it all cleaned out, you're like.
Yeah, but I've also seen it on New Street where the camper was parked there for two weeks solid.
Yeah, well, or Delaware Street for a year.
So, I mean, you're right, there has to be some give and take. Our current ordinance for vehicles is twenty-four hours. So do we treat them the same or do we give them a little extended time? That's like a question for the council there. Chad, you have anything to add on that?
Okay. And we want to move on to the next one then. Uh, we've got combining adjoining lots, a draft ordinance review.
Yeah, so what you have is a draft, part of you, I talked to Jim this morning. I want to make it simpler. I think there's still too many steps and hurdles in this to just combine the lots. Uh, I, I don't think it should go through planning and zoning. I think what it is is more administrative. It comes in, I review it, make sure. Tim Heide and I review it. Plan, zoning person and I go through it, make sure it makes sense. Then it comes to the city council for approval. And I think that, that's all it really needs to be. We still have to record a deed, but Jim will have it drafted up. Application they fill out provides the legal description of both parcels. Uh, and so they're tagged together and they cannot separate them without going through a subdivision of this.
Right.
So we, we, we don't want people just combining and just might, or separating whatever they feel like.
Right.
We can combine them and they're taking the tax the same and then you can have a situation where you had Joe with your lots. It's been through the whole process of resuraging and everything. You know, for you to get the garage to fit on here without having, having variance. This, this is what is an option for people that they own both lots next to each other.
Yeah.
They can combine them back in. Uh, but in the end, if they want to separate that lot back off. We want to verify that, you know, it goes through planning zoning, they didn't build. Or they wouldn't make it a, a non-conforming lot anymore, uh, or something along those lines. So we'll have some. Relief in there to get through the subdivision, but it's, it's another hurdle for us to split that off.
Yeah. It's great that Heather to do it, I mean.
Yeah, it's weird for you to do it, but he's probably as well, it was the night.
Yeah, you gotta go have a survey and you gotta make sure both property taxes are a hundred percent current. And you gotta get them over here and then zoning and planning. Say no, and if it does go through there, then it's gotta go to the council. I mean, they try to copy them just in once.
Yeah, and right now we do have someone that is in the process. They'd like to combine a couple lots so you build a garage. So, um, Jim will have a revision for you. Um, Holly, so, so that I get it, I'll give it to you, but I'd like to take action on it Monday night if possible. If there are some concerns from the council, we'll start about Monday night, but I'd like to get that moving right away because you'd like to build that garage this fall.
So I'm just throwing out a scenario that would be like some of the properties that we've sold. You know, where we've gotten it, maybe the neighbors want to buy it up or whatever and then they could.
Alley, vacated.
Or an out, vacated alley or something like that. Okay.
They could combine that right onto their existing property of a lot easier. To me, it makes more sense.
Okay. Guys, any further questions? Okay, well, we'll move on. Next, uh, building department truck replacements.
We're gonna do a trade-in on the Ranger, uh, just because it took so long. We advertised so much in order to get rid of the water pump truck, I don't think we're needing that much more out of it. By selling it separately, so we'll just do that as part of the trade-in. It is in the budget, we budgeted for this, so we're set. The councils, we'll wait for the council Monday night for approval.
Four years, Ranger, four Ranger, we got an arm. Good catch.
Well, miles, but.
Twenty-five hundred bucks is all they're giving.
It's, it's pretty gross.
Oh, yeah, right.
Trust me, low miles is. Town traffic, we've done it, stopping it.
Very small, do you drive to see your balls all the time?
All right. We'll move on to the next one, police contract buyouts.
Uh, this is one where we just did the contract with Nick. It, it was like fifty-six hundred dollars. We're up to do five years on fifty-six hundred dollar contract. Doesn't necessarily call a sense. To me, I think it makes more sense. He was his third year in a five-year contract. I, I think if we're buying, or if we're finding someone that we're hiring and sending him to. To uh training, five-year contract makes sense. I think there's a level in there or maybe we can figure out. A forgiveness level. It's maybe it's three thousand dollars a year. So fifteen thousand dollars could be five years.
Gotcha.
Uh, so we just amended this contract down to two years instead of the full five years. Uh, Chad, you have anything? I don't have, okay. I talked to Ben about this a little bit.
It was an issue then brought.
Yeah, we just didn't catch it when we booked the contract. We just used an old form, recycled it, that's what caused the issue here. Because it really, he's working on, right, he's doing a vulnerable job for us, but reality is a room with five thousand dollars over two year period.
Right.
Actually, you have to wipe that off there. What I've heard is some cities independence is offering a five thousand dollar bonus. For sign-on and that five thousand will be applied towards your uh current contract buyout. There's money left over after that, it goes to the employee.
Gotcha.
So we're working with that stuff now too. So me, I think this makes more sense. Uh, Chief Davis and I would like to see us implement a policy where. We look at how many years the officer's been in place for buying out a contract. And then we base it off the number of years they have left on their payout.
Prorated, yeah. So it'd be a formal policy we bring to council at some point, but we'll have an amendment to next contract. Although, Jen, on Monday, if that's all right.
And just make it a two-year contract.
So right now you have a five-year contract.
He's got a five-year contract.
But we're talking about breaking it down to.
To, yeah.
Now, with doing that, what did that do for the other officers that we fired on five-year contracts?
Uh, most of them had higher dollar notes. It, when we get above seven or eight thousand dollars, the standard was what it was at the time, but things have changed in the last four years too.
I just don't want to.
Yeah.
Make a decision that's gonna get a real spider.
Yeah, we only have only one other officer. They're getting towards the end of their contract.
It'll just be good to have some a policy in place for going forward. Makes us competitive too. Okay, uh, next, any further questions? Did you have more to? Okay, um, next update on the sale of the city-owned properties is up on Gay Street.
Wait, I don't want to hear that.
Uh, we are working right now with, uh, John Dolan and Jim Peters to get a bond in place, uh, so that we can move forward with. Selling city property. I know there were some questions from EMC, who is our insurance coverer, our insurance provider. Uh, their attorney, uh, regarding what sort of bond coverage. So I think, uh, Jim Peters and the EMC attorney, we're gonna meet. Uh, have a conference call on Friday. I think it's Friday. Um, so I will, I think we'll have Jim provide an update on Monday on that conversation. The other two parcels, two forty-five Park Drive and nine oh one West Main. I know two forty-five Park Drive, I think, is pretty well complete now. Uh, nine oh one West Main, uh, the council approved those quit claim deeds of last meeting. They have a different attorney and so there's still some questions on on the quit claim deed for that one. So we're still working through that, but. We'd like to be able to get the one oh eight Gay Street turned over to, uh, summer so they can get winterized and. They want to get a roof on down there or something. They want to get a roof or something.
The trainers are what's good luck, yeah.
Yeah, John Dolan is really working hard to try and get this done, so I appreciate.
Two forty-five Park Drive.
I think it's all done. So I think that one, this, uh, Jane Hance was the attorney. I got her the quit claim deed last week and I think I talked to the, um. The Lawrence girls today and that one sounded like that's all done. There's still, you end up with the nine oh one West Main. Thank you, Aaron. Um, cameras access system for the police department in City Hall. The, um, cameras, Chad can help with this one too. The cameras that we have for City Hall, uh, security cameras basically have started to fail the server.
We we don't have a hard drive.
The hard drive has gone out. Um, without dispatch here, it's nice to have those cameras, uh, dispatch can monitor it from, uh, faraway, but it also then is attracts. Um, you know, who is in and out of the building. We're also looking at a different access system. We ran into this with, um. Some, uh, terminations, the back door. Um, we have a couple different door keypad systems here. And they're all manual. Uh, we would like to get one that's on a computer and that would be more specific to employee. Right now, we have a code that a lot of people have to that back door, so we'd rather have some sort of. Card or or something. Yeah, Bob, a a number specific each person, um, just to screw things up a little bit again with dispatch being gone. We don't have that constant monitoring of the building or somebody always in here, please, they get busy at night depending on how many guys they have on duty, so. We're getting some prices on, getting a couple different quotes on that. Uh, one thing that arose during that discussion was the, um. The fire alarm, so they are looking at that as well. That may be a completely separate project, um, but we'll be coming back to council with information on that. Will they be doing that at the fire station then too or not? Because they have key pass too, don't they? They have, yeah.
We have that control or keep up.
The the one that we're, um, pricing or the ones that we have priced so far, we've got two different companies. I haven't gotten the official one back, but they said they were, um, buildable. Systems, so like we started out with City Hall, then wanted to add that on to the fire station or, um, you know, other city facilities. It would be something that we could add to, you know, budget for and add to. So that, there's nothing really on that yet other than just to let you know that this is something that's coming down the pipe.
If, uh, if we end up doing the fire department too, it won't come out of the fire department fund, correct?
Just because. Out of their general fund budget. So, but it would, we would budget for it.
It would be a budget item that would be added into their budget.
And they would be part of discussions on that. I just didn't know if they eventually get them on all the different, like, waste water treatment, you know, just. That so that the right people. Yeah, I know you went, but just so you know, the right people are going into the right buildings, that not just any person walk into them. The two, the systems have capabilities, so like Monday through Friday, seven thirty to four, the door doesn't lock, people coming out, so it's only after before, before thirty that they would lock down. So, so you wouldn't have to swipe in every time you come into City Hall. Um, so there there, there's a lot more capabilities when you go to a system like this and it can be managed from a computer and then we can. You know, eliminate employees when you have turnover. And a lot of times they have remote access from some of those places that they help you do. That's a surprise, yeah. There's also access tracking too. I'm not, we would ever need it, but in case somebody, you know, got in or or something was missing, something happened. We'd have the ability to see, okay, who was the last one to access the building. I don't have any worries about that, but it is a feature.
Right, it's better to have it, not need it.
Right, exactly. Okay. Their childcare community meetings on the fifteenth.
It's on the fifteenth, starting at seven thirty AM, it'll be in the community center at the paragons. Uh, basically, we're going to find one that treats childcare more. I'm not headed by the council, but it's a non-problem organization, it's seven members. Uh, they're all appointed from different locations, five of them are, two of them are, uh, basically at large, but their parents gets in the centers. And we're just gonna have an open, candid conversation about condition of childcare in Manchester and what we're facing as a committee. Uh, with our numbers, uh, with what we're having to pay for wages to even attract people to come in and talk to us. Um, it it's a different environment right now. Uh, we're competing not with a danger center, we're competing with. Fairways and Walmarts and, you know, Hardings for employees of certain ages. Um, you know, and one of the things that we just sent out notices on is we're not doing after-school care now because. That's been one of the most difficult positions for us to fill. We can't find people that are willing to deal with other people's kids. That are coming back and being disrespectful and. Part of the challenge we're running into though is such an age gap because reach out here serves up to age twelve. Basically, age ten, they're pretty much done, they're one of the old, but if you have five-year-olds to ten-year-olds, the maturity levels between them is huge definitely. So it becomes a little bit of a challenge. The other issue, you know, we run into is busing. The only place where the bus stops at is Storyland, which is the industrial park, because the carousel is too close. So it becomes a little bit of a challenge. And so what we have in those conversations about what we need to do as a community and where our future steps are.
The council is invited.
The council is invited. We prefer the council to be able to pen, so you know what's going on and you don't just hear rumors.
And it's the fifteenth, seven thirty at.
A week from tomorrow.
Yep. Any further questions, Tim? All right, we'll move on to, I understand Jason's the only one here then.
Yeah, I think the only thing, Harry might know more on this than I do. They're waiting for a curve ball to come out of that paper. Guessing it's late next week before they show up to pay. That would be, yeah, I'm thinking already that, I'm I'm talking to the product manager, he's talking to the paving superintendent. And we're kind of getting, I think he's getting even closer to the truthful answer. So I think you're looking at the week of the twenty-first for the paving, you know. As I mentioned, they're talking about doing half with. You're paving out there, paving half, hand for it, they call the sack, I'm coming back for another half after you get here, so.
Okay, so we're gonna get it done yet this year now?
Oh, it's gonna be done this year.
Oh, Commerce Court. I didn't know which one you were talking about. I'm sorry, okay.
Commerce Court, I'll buy it.
East Main Street will be in the spring.
Okay, I thought that was what we had talked about. Okay, I didn't hear that.
No, Commerce Court.
Okay, thank you, not a problem. Any questions for Jay? All right, we'll move on then to Allison, you're in the front. How about you?
All right. I just wanted to let you guys know, I I repost a lot on Facebook about things that we get new and things. And so the last couple of weeks, we have gotten two new collections. Um, one was hat spots. We have three hat spots that we are trying out, um, to put into our collection that people are checking out. Um, they get a week and then they can renew it one time before they have to take a break and then they can get it back. So I got a good deal through US Cellular to try it for three months and if we like it, then we can decide if we need more, what we want to continue doing. Um, so far, they have all been checked out at one point. There's two checked out currently, um, again, out of the three. So. We also have memory care kits, which has been kind of a project that, um, to start a project, you need funding to do that and we didn't. You need some significant funding to do that. And so somebody, um, a company down in Cedar Rapids, um, actually, uh. Provided the funds to start this up. It was a thousand dollars.
Wow.
So, um, we have twelve kits and they're all, they're current, they're different levels and there's different things in them based on con, um, content. And so really cool things there. Um, we did make over thirteen hundred dollars on our library sale, so we'll use that for tech updates as well as furniture. Um, since we sold some furniture, we need a couple of extra things in there. I have looked out at Porgrin's and have a couple of things picked out and I will order from there. The Friends of the Library are having the book sale starting October sixteenth with the Early Bird, um, sale that evening and that will go through Saturday, the twentieth. And then that theme week, we'll have our Friends Carnegie Night, um, which is the seventeenth at five thirty, um, we'll have a ground code program. So, um, there'll be some cool things there, some some troops and things like that as well. That's just a good way for the friends and the library to come together and do one program together, so. Uh, but I did start my strategic plan. I have to have something up to date. This one is, um, the last goal is over in December. And so we're hoping to get it real close to the new year, get it done and get it implemented. I'm looking up to up to a five-year plan, um, with goals based on the community needs. We did have our focus group with ten community members. We'll have, um, a special board meeting to write the goals and then after that, we will write the objectives as as staff. And then that will go back to the board and it will be approved. Um, I will share this with you when we get done and also, um, the community's input, what they kind of. Um, put together, it's getting compiled now. There'll be some time, we'll be meeting sometime, um, in October yet or, uh, in November to to regular full, so. And then, um, I did, I usually share this with you guys, like in August or September, and I didn't have a chance because I hadn't talked to my board. But I just want to give you these to look over yourselves. This is my annual report for the library. I won't go through a lot, but I'll just share, show you how it's kind of laid out. That's the information on the front and the back, and then inside has, um, more of our statistical information. So on the one side, on the left side, when you open up, it has information about a renovation that we did. Uh, about summer reading grants, our teen advisory board, as well as the three partnerships that we really had last year with the schools and, um. As well as the Tai, uh, Tai Chi that we did as well. My favorite part always to look at is the new library part, circulations and the stats that we have there. Um, that kind of is fun to look at from year to year and see the differences and things like that. It also really shows how many people do come in and out and what they're using it for and things like that. So. This is just more for your information. You don't, um, but if you have any questions, please let me know. I can, um, definitely use or anything that you guys have. Um, I just want to continue to thank you for your continued support of the library and I I can tell that you guys. Think that that's an important part of the community and I thank you for that, so.
Thank you, Allison. Any questions for me? Uh, Chad? You're like one of the first ones here. We'll let you go.
Uh, we're still working on filmers slot. We tested a young lady today, which patch her today, so we're on the next one. Next phase, we have. I think two others that we're looking at also. She was on the short foot a few weeks ago, a dozen or half dozen, I sent out anybody's horse. Um, one thing I left, did you bring it up? I'll give you a scan if I brought it to you.
I did not.
Okay. Last week, I think last week, had elderly gentleman come in and say that he had a call from the treasury office that he had warned for his arrest. Um, he had fifteen thousand dollars in cash in his pocket and was gonna go sign a cashier's check up at Edgewood. Um, for a reason, he thought better. He came in and talked to me and I said, yeah, you're being scanned. We, we got that cleared up, I hope. I hope he's plenty back in the bank. But that's that's going on a lot, so you get word out on that.
Thank you for sharing that, yeah. You never know.
No.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, done.
Uh, flag football has three weeks left. Our youth volleyball program wrapped up last Sunday. Uh, we got some painting done at the pool. We've been hopping on painting, um, a couple of patches that needed to be done, also the, um. The green, yellow, red lines that are one foot, two foot, three foot depth markers, as well as the black lane lines and the depth, no diving, um, markers. So we got that done. Um, and then there's a mud valve that we got ordered. It should be in here in a couple of weeks to be replaced in the filter room. About seventeen hundred dollars, which is lower than we were expecting, uh, but that is needed. Uh, the other one's rusted out pretty bad and it should cut down as what, the last spot that was kind of leaking, so it should be the last of the leaks. Um, a couple other smaller projects, um, the Central Park Shelter roof is is shingles. The shingles have been coming off, um, with the help of some kids over the years, but also they've just, uh, they're just kind of deteriorated. So that will be replaced with steel here this fall and then, um, working on getting some quotes for the basement of the van shell to finish off some plumbing. As Chad may attest to, it's it's a nightmare for him each, um, each spring specifically, uh, and fall. That's what we start off that. It's only a matter of time before there's gonna be some damage that's not gonna be able to be fixed by by him or Jeremy, so. Um, we'll get that back and hopefully we can get that, um, finished off. And if anybody's interested in going to the basement of the van shell anytime, let me know. It's a nice little dungeon down there. Take a peek at it or we'll show you pictures, but old pipes rusting, um, you know, it's been around for a while, so needed to be done. And then the last thing for me is, um, Dogtoberfest is this Sunday, the thirteenth, from one to four, Dog, White Water Park. Uh, food trucks, vendors, dog-related, um, items, which would be fundraiser for the dog park.
They've been having something just about every week recently.
Busy, busy dog, uh, fundraising times right now.
What was the date and town on that again?
This is Sunday, the thirteenth, from one to four at the White Water Park.
They have twenty-seven vendors signed up.
Wow, wow, really?
And four different food trucks.
That's awesome. Okay, here.
Joe called, uh, last Monday morning and went to haul our seven hundred thousand gallon slugs this past Friday, so he showed up at. Six thirty and they pulled out at midnight and they were done. They came in Saturday morning and cleaned up, so. That's one big check mark off our winterizing list, so it's gonna be good there. I think Aaron actually already has the bill. Uh, we're in the UV last week, oh, I, uh, last two or three years, we haven't put a whole lot of money in that system. For passing, everything is fine, but it's. It's time to start getting that five thousand dollars that we normally do annually to back into the system for the next couple of years and we. Bring that back online. Uh, Matt and I will be pushing hard the next two weeks to get the pool ready to. Go to sleep for the next six months, so hopefully we'll get their mud valve put in here in the next week and. And then waiting for Doug to call to wrap up the White Water Park whenever.
Summer doesn't want to let up yet, so.
Water turns finally, it only takes an hour or two to do, so we're gonna try to keep it open as long as we can. Uh, got some classes coming up. Matt will be going to Dubu next Tuesday. Uh, got some classes coming up, Matt will be going to Deview next Tuesday, Wednesday, Chad? To get some CDUs and then that October thirtieth will be the wastewater meeting at Fairgrounds up here in town, so there'll be hundred eighty, hundred ninety wastewater operators in town for the day. Um, other than that, we're just getting some stuff ordered for wintering changes. We're still waiting on the the pump and period user and pinning gear that was ordered. That's supposed to be the first, the first week in December, so we're at their mercy on that, so. If that comes in, we'll get it sold, but. No, other than that, just try and stay ahead and get ready for winter.
Thanks for the tour the other day, we appreciated that. Yeah, too. Okay, Jason?
Uh, started the leak pickup today, um, kind of slow started, but we're getting started at it anyway, so um, couple hours in the morning usually knocks it out now and then we just keep a straight clipper going till it freezes up now, so keeping that stuff cleaned up. Um, getting a lot of, starting to get a lot of sewer work done. Uh, Matt's been coming over every Tuesday, Thursday, and I got him and Scott working together, so. I'm gonna start training Matt a little bit on just running a jetter truck and stuff, so just another person to have for weekend and stuff, we have a party or anything like that, so. Just be really nice to get some some training done, so. All maintenance, we'll start that up here pretty quick too, getting stuff ready for flower season coming on. And uh, big project coming up here before, probably next week if things look good, um, we're gonna concrete the floor and back, building back here, so. So Aaron's gotta come through the front door.
My hand, they're they're sunning.
We are good. I wasn't gonna take that. I I don't.
Uh, working on setting up the new truck, um, thanks to council for um, agreeing to the the new number six truck. Um, the Perry's old wastewater truck will be getting sold here at some point. Uh, the water flower this summer and then our our old number six will go down to the flower watering truck next year. So and then I talked to Rivers today, um, they thanked you guys for working with them to be able to push us back till next spring, so. They lost a paving crew this summer, he said things like are really piling up, so yeah, they appreciate it. So, that's all I got.
Any questions for Jane? You're in on chat?
Um, we've done a lot of work with lead and copper stuff, uh, I think we're pretty close sixteen hundred out of nineteen hundred that we needed to gather information on. That is gonna be due here to the sixteenth, I think, so we have to have that submitted.
Just for public information, can you explain to people why you're doing this and what information is gonna, what all this gathering of information is gonna be used for?
So the EPA passed a rule that they wanted us to go on inventory, um, water service pipe materials, um. When it first came out, they wanted to know a lot of information, they wanted to know what it was that record, there's uh, in the house and the house, in home plant. Um, they walked that rule back many, 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 many times to just what we did was what's coming in the lower basement. Um, what they're gonna do with this is still up in the air, um. There's a lot of people in the community that I've discussed this with, cause they were reluctant to let us in the house to see the service line. Um, they're worried about it being here, right, now you have to replace them.
Yes.
Um, we don't know if we're there yet, um, it fortunately, I don't, I don't think we have any comeback, I said they had lead pipe coming into the house. Um, do I believe that we don't have some lead in the in the ground yet? Yeah, we do, I mean, there's just, we're we're in a little community, we have lead. Um, this kind of came down for a long time since the Flint, Michigan thing. Um, so this administration, our current administration in Washington DC, um, implemented this, um, there's there's really no guidance yet from EPA, what and when or how they plan on doing any of this. There is money that's available to replace lead service line. Um, it's based off of the income of your community, so more up in the wage survey, you get a point system, I think we've scored a twelve or thirteen, you have to be a twelve or above to be qualified for that money. Um, ran out of cities that are, are the talent or cities, but that are getting it, they're scoring in like the upper thirties, lower forties. So a community like us probably don't ever see a chance at that kind of money. They're going into a large-scale service line replacement, um, but.
So basically, what you're saying right now though, is that if they're basically getting an inventory?
Yes.
And what to do with that inventory?
I I would imagine there will come out that the rule that if you have lead service signs, a complete lead service sign from the water main to your house, that those have to be replaced.
But that has not happened yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
And every city in the United States is being required to do this.
It's not just exercise.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it was in the mid nineties, they they did a lead inventory back then too. And then that's what our our lead and copper sampling plan currently is based off of.
Right.
So we currently sample for it, um, be doing it next year, we need twenty samples, so.
I just, I wanted, a lot of people, I've been hearing a lot of chatter amongst the community, so I just thought, put it out there and let them hear from you, so thank you.
Yeah, it's been real fun. I had a lot of help with it, Jason's guy went out for a day and a half of all of it and helped me out. Um, the mailings, the mailers didn't work, so then we went door to door. Um, Laura came up with the idea to put on our door tags, the idea of um, just put my cell phone number on there and people would go down their basement and take a picture of it, attach the address to that picture and send it to me and then then I just kept a list of those. Um, we had more of that, um, I actually had a whole bunch of them sent to my um, Manchester dot org email address. Um, so that part of it actually was more productive than I thought.
Good. Not Laura, she's smart, isn't she?
She was, she done.
She's got a new job, yeah.
Yeah, as far as the paperwork side of all this, I've gathered information and and brainstormed the other, through this whole process, so. To me, where we're at on it, um, they sound like they don't have that many or it's not complete, but for the manpower that we have, I think we've got way more than I anticipated having them by this time.
That's good, congratulations.
Um, so I appreciate everybody that helped out with that. Um, other than that, we're flexing ignorance, um, we put it out there on social media, um, you know, down at the downtown area, which is the biggest point of this town like that, can be rusty and have water coloration issues, so we hadn't any phone calls yet. Thinking that one pretty well, um. So here, we got park stuff coming up, um, once JJ and Doug session parks on memorize those and then um, we got classes coming up and then Thursday of this, we have, we've got, you know, several mobile schools coming up and.
Public, the industry, yeah.
Yeah, um, we'll be up there for that and um, but you brought up winter, winter, winter stuff. Um, so I've been ordering winter parts now because it's been such a order to get stuff and actually having parts coming up, like when they say they're gonna be here, so maybe we run out of bill slide or maybe I leave the port shut down, but it's kind of nice to see boxes of parts. So, outside of that, business is neutral.
Any further questions, switching? Okay, Aaron?
Uh, just one quick thing, we um, last several years, we've been fortunate to have Haley Shaw in the office, uh, she was finishing up some schooling and was able to work Fridays uh, with um, the staff that we have, uh, Julie, Laura and I. There's a fair amount of vacation, so people are, tend to be gone on Fridays, so um, Haley graduated and got a a job. We now have an opportunity, uh, our pool manager, Krista Briggs. Her job, she has Fridays off and she has expressed some interest in potentially um, working here. It would, it would parlay nice with what she does for Doug because then she would be here on Friday, so earlier she could start working on different things for swim lesson seasons, but then also start to learn our system and be able to help us out, um, you know, as we have vacations, holidays, all those things coming up. Uh, we've really missed having Haley in the office, we did budget for a a person in here, we just uh, weren't sure, you know, exactly to find somebody who would want to just work a Friday. You know, that's not the easiest thing, so um, we will be bringing that forward to the council, if that's okay with with the council. I think it, I think it'll be a good opportunity, it'll get her here, she can be doing our pool stuff as well as working on on city stuff, finishing up scanning, we still have a fair amount of that to get done, um, we're just, seems like we're really busy.
And I just want to clarify, so nobody thinks there's nepotism or anything, because that is my niece, so I just want people to know that. So that she's been part of Doug's program for many, many years, helps with the training for the CPR and lifeguard training and
Yeah, so and she's, she's been a big part for over a decade now, anyway, pool, but she also teaches all my um, lifeguard first aid, as well as my WSI water safety classes, so I'm in contact and communication with her most of the year anyway, to set things up and make sure that our staff is ready to roll, so it's, it would, it would benefit me a lot of that as well. Um, not that it would be a whole lot of hours of it this type of year, but once we hit, once we hit spring, it's easier lines of communication.
So I just wanted to disclose that.
And then once summer hit, um, I I think we would have our regular summer person back because Doug doesn't, I don't want like Krista come here on Fridays.
Do we get him that option, that isn't really up to him?
You know, it's a little whiny.
I'll be a lot whiner if you if you try to steal it from the pool.
Well, you guys gotta work with the my dogs. As far as uh, I have been heard coming on Fridays, is there anything that we should do to protect us from any potential issues?
I'll review a little bit with with Amy Racer, but I think we're we're gonna be okay.
I mean, it makes sense, just, she's just gonna work an extra day for the city than she's been doing. May make sense, but just want to make sure that we cross or cover up our bases on that.
Make sure we got everything taken care of. She won't be a direct report to the mayor, for sure.
No, not at all.
Director of water, Laura.
Yeah, that's the truth back. Okay. Uh, Tim?
I kind of want to talk about goal setting. I want to talk about, uh, we've got Mickey Shields lined up to do the goal setting session for us, but I think this year I'd like to change the structure a little bit. Um, to me, I'd really like to see department heads do theirs and put together their programs, department heads are gonna focus on their departments. But it's just what they do, it's, that's where their circle knowledge is, and so we can bring together a few of the items that they have for projects, but both city is. The council sets the policy and sets the direction for the count, for the city where we're going. And so I really want to have the council sit together and do it separately from the department heads. I want the council to talk about where we're going, because I I do think we want to make sure we're, we understand where we're coming from and how we want to get to where we want to go. And so for us to sit down and have that conversation about what's the direction, where's the policy coming from, because we are going to have some difficult conversations we have to have. I know there's concerns about budgeting, there's concerns about debt. Um, but we also have projects we need to do, and so those are competing interests right there, whether you do projects or you have debt. And so we need to sit down and talk about what our comfort level is, we also need to understand, as Aaron and I prepare to start the budget, where is it the council wants us to be? So my game plan is for department heads to do their own and we'll just bring, incorporate what they have into what the council works with.
And we've done it that way before.
In the past, we didn't have a committee of all sessions like we have right now, where department heads are in front of the council like they are now. So it was part of that team building exercise for council and departments get to know each other. But right now, I I really think it's important that the council works together, uh, and figures out where we want to go. Department heads can work together and figure out what their priorities are as well, and we kind of get these things moving forward. We will, just once we have the goal setting done, it doesn't mean we're done, we'll continue to work on these things throughout the course of the year, so.
How many, uh, when they bring their their punch list, their top, you know, priority list or whatever, how many, how far down do you ask it for, top ten, top five?
Uh, basically, that's things for me to look at, kind of get an idea, part of its cost.
Right.
I mean, Doug sits there and tells me, you know, who's going to or replace Seaver Hall, those are big dollar, it's it's one item. Uh, whereas, you know, we talked a little bit about uh, vehicle replacements or foot replacement, we talked about streets. Uh, again, a very sound where we we go with things, because you know, Chad and Perry have issues with the streets as well, because they have their infrastructure underneath it, Perry's concerned about what's going on with the plant, we have alcohol lines. So it's it's gonna be, we'll bring some stuff together, but they're gonna be looking at projects and council sets the policy. And we need to fit the projects into what the policy is.
Do you have a date?
I know, what works best for you guys.
We usually do it in December, correct?
Yep. Uh, if the first Monday in December, we do that for the council, because that's part of the challenge.
Is that dear honey?
Well, it doesn't even matter, department heads, department heads will be during the day. The council will be in the evenings, because I know there's some jobs in order.
The the second would be the first Monday in December.
Yeah, the second, yeah.
That's the next weekend.
Dear honey's the next weekend, okay, I just know that's a big deal.
If you want to check that date, then we can, we can maybe formalize it, we'll have Monday.
Yeah. Uh, Monday or or Wednesday, we're, if I need to go to a Wednesday, so the board's.
I'll have to get back to you on Monday.
Yeah, I'll have to.
Okay, because I think we start at five o'clock, that's what I'll be on the timeline, so.
And then, you're Wednesday of December, right?
Monday or Wednesday, December.
Oh, yeah, and then in December, are we having a meeting of the whole, that first Monday? If we go to the budget session thing, do we get rid of the meeting of the whole?
Well, typically in December, we're smaller, so we don't necessarily have a committee meeting that month. So.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think this will take, unless we have something come down the pipe where we feel like we need to.
And we can do that on the third Monday, maybe.
Yeah, so but, yeah, typically we don't and then we kick off January with budget sessions.
I remember that. And then, uh, have you guys discussed the the Christmas party, what that would be?
Uh, we have not settled on that just yet.
End of the year celebrations, my bad.
Employee recognition.
Okay.
Uh, we will look into that and get back to you, because we have to identify a location to where we hold that. That's the other thing, I'm trying to figure out where we're gonna hold the goal setting session too. I'm not sure that I want to hold it here, I'll get some place fresh. Uh, we might do it at Jack, or the Brad Basket. Hold it in their basement, we're gonna get it set up, so we can have refreshments.
Next step on that back end too.
Yeah, next step would be down the line as well. But we'll we'll look for an application for that and we'll identify what we want to do for the employee appreciation, because again, I think we enjoy having the music trivia or just trivia night. Anytime we can beat Doug Foley at something, we're enjoying it.
Well, it's not gonna be too hard too much longer with the bad knees yet.
Probably working on my team right now.
Uh, and then, so please put those in the calendars, let me know. Does it sound, are you okay with what I'm recommending as far as goals by here?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, and then I don't have the information digested yet, uh, but I got the numbers back from ones of where they haven't set up on on the month's stretch as you come into the subdivision there. Very little traffic between the hours of midnight and five AM, almost non-existent. Majority of the traffic, and I mean the vast majority of it, is twenty-five or slower. We have, we had one incident, I think where the car was over thirty-five. So and and that maybe a goof on, maybe there was two cars coming that misread or something. Uh, but I will get that information to the council, we'll have that for Monday night. Uh, but I will get that information to the council. We'll have that for Monday night.
And just a clarification, the speed camera that we used was one that the city owned.
Yes.
We didn't pay anything extra.
No, that trailer, we, we, we've owned that for seven, eight years now.
That was a concern on that, I think.
It's, it's been ten years.
But Laura has been here a few times.
So that, that's, you know, part of that is it displays your speed, except that, but it also does track accounts. So we know how many cars are coming in. We're not, it doesn't count the cars going away, it's just coming towards. But I will have that information for the council on Monday night.
Speaking of cameras, with the new legislation, is that mean we're not gonna try for a speed camera ever?
I guess we'll have to get red light cameras, or we'll be cameras that read the registration of the car.
Strawberry's losing theirs, right?
Yeah.
So is that?
All of the cities.
All small towns lose theirs.
Yeah.
Really, all small.
I, I will say, I know they're, they're unpopular for a lot of people because they claim that they can't spy their user, but it's on camera and it has the speed and they're tested. People don't want people speeding through their, their neighborhood. That's what we're dealing with right now. And, uh, you got people speeding through town. When you start, I understand it's a revenue generator, police departments or not. Because if we start telling officers we have quotas, then you're quotas.
Right.
But we can't also issue enough tickets to cover our, our costs for the police department.
But also, there are small communities that do not have a police department.
Exactly right.
And they've got daycares or they've got schools or they've got things and there's nobody there to police it, right? Parks, you, I mean, you have to find it, but nobody should be just setting it that you don't have some latitude between the times. You know, twenty-five miles an hour when you get a ticket.
Well, I mean, a lot of the overs, it's a store for when everybody is.
Right, right. So, I mean, I know there are people abusing it, and those people who have abused it have made it not usable for everybody else, so.
No, we don't have to worry about it. Legislature is taking care of it.
Right, so it is what it is. So I'm not pro or against, I'm not pro or for, but, or against, but.
Will you act out in the Windsor drive on Monday, on Monday night, we'll have a decision what, what we're gonna.
Just information.
Yeah.
So the following Monday, I mean, you'd be guessing we'd be having a resolution then?
Yeah, council directs staff what they want to see for a resolution up there. We will put it together for the twenty-eighth and for voting.
Twenty-fourth, is that twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, you're right. Okay, sorry. All right, anything else, Tim?
That's it.
All right, Brian? Linda?
Oh, Mary Ann?
Nothing. Joe?
Uh, just wanted to mention that I seen the Camilla Tree Services loading up an enclosed trailer for whatever items that we can round up in the community and they're gonna take that down to Florida, I believe was what the post said.
North Carolina.
North Carolina, my bad. I just seen Florida was getting hit. They're protecting today.
Yeah, another category five hurricane's gonna hit the, in.
Yeah. So I talked to some people from down in Oak City that they said that there already had a gas down there, so.
I talked to Ted, they, they told me that, uh, he had a friend that's down there already and he said they, he took a lot of water in these things along and he said, these, these people just went crazy. Like they hadn't had anything to bring to some of the places for. So I.
Yeah, I've seen that, that's, you can just follow him on Facebook. He's posted it if you're looking, kind of curious what you're looking to have to donate or whatever, but I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Phil?
Love it.
Okay. Um, just a heads up that, uh, the next council meeting, we will also be giving an award that night, um, pass through award, but we wanted to make sure that Chris, who was involved, was able to be here with us too, um, for those who were that got hit, um, last night. So we'll be doing a good Samaritan award to those people who were first on the scene and, but they're plenty who were here that night as well. So we're really excited to have a family here too. Um, and also I just wanna just let people know, I do appreciate when I get letters and everything and, and I, and phone calls and I return those calls and I call people back. And I love to have discussions, but I, I prefer that if you, you have something that you wanna talk about or you want me to bring up, please call me or sign your name to a letter. I don't appreciate letters that aren't signed because I don't know who to talk. I might have questions before I bring it up and it's just not fair. So, um, I just appreciate it. If you send me something, please sign your name to it or give me a telephone number or email that I can give you a call back and I'd be happy to do that. Um, other than that, we're looking on our season of kindness. One has agreed to join us in that event, so we're, we're grateful for that. So, and with that, um, I'll take, we don't need a motion, do we? Motion, motion from Joe, second from Bill, adjourn and we adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful.